Good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, June 3rd at two o'clock and we call the order of the pre-temporal meeting. Meeting is being recorded and is available on YouTube. So I, is there any other boards or anything that need to open anything up? There's gonna be part of anyone. So I'm actually gonna, I'm just gonna read what it is. So that's a one item discussion, meeting warrant articles. A article nineteen proposing MBTA zoning question and answers. And then any other articles I need to discuss. So I don't know, you wanna just kinda inform, give the kickoff to this?
Yeah, the, um, the reason for having the meeting is just to have everybody have the same information. There's a lot of misinformation. I've told it on the, at least on Facebook and in social media. So I thought it would make a good idea for us to rally up, get all of the same information if anybody, any department heads have questions about the zoning or um, any issues that may arise, that we can all share the same information. And then also just so that all department heads are prepared to answer questions related to their departments, so that it doesn't all fall on one person to answer the questions. We, we know from social media that it looks like there may be quite a few people there, a lot of questions. And so I wanted our department heads to be as prepared as possible to answer those questions. So that's really the, the whole prux of this. And then if any department heads had questions on any of the other warrant articles, that they could raise them here. So they can be as prepared as possible going into tonight's meeting. Um, I don't know, Victoria, do you wanna kick off or you want me to?
I mean, um, so I know we're mainly here for article nineteen, amending the plan mixed-use development overly district. So I guess like Deb said, we just wanna make sure that, you know, if a question is directed at some of the other departments that you guys are prepared to answer them. For example, some of the questions I've seen come up, um, are either about, you know, school-aged children entering the system and about emergency services, the big one. And then, you know, um, water and sewer infrastructure, that I feel that might be better answered by other departments rather than the planning board.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that, that, so I guess one of the questions strategically that I wanted to know. Victoria is, are you gonna make a statement, do you think, when this article comes up?
Uh, yeah, so I believe either myself or Dave is gonna hopefully go up before there's a vote and sort of make a statement or.
Yeah, because I think it's a misconception now. The planning board just decided they're gonna do this zoning and it, and it, I think a statement needs to be made that the planning board is just trying to comply with the governor's orders.
And I think it's not just that. I think everyone, right? Because I've, I've said this to many people, is my fear is that you're gonna get some upset people. They don't know who to point it at, so they're gonna point it at anyone in this world, right? So I think we need to make sure that we're very clear that this was a state mandate that came to us and we're trying to do what we can with what was put in front of us, right? That if this isn't a, a Victoria or a planning board or Debbie Selectman, the chiefs, whoever. It, it was literally handed to us from the state. So I just think we need to make that clear for all of you.
And I think that needs to be right out of the gate. So that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't, I don't know if you're planning on speaking or Dave is planning on speaking.
Yeah, it's either me or Dave, but yeah, I sort of have some, some notes here to sort of preliminary, you know, go over everything, the history of, you know, what is the MBTA Communities Act? What does this mean for Free Town and how we, um, you know, plan to comply or.
Well, I would say, first thing is, this was something mandated by the state and we are just trying to comply. I think the other cl- clarity that needs to be made is although it, we're in this predicament because we have an MBTA station. It has nothing to do with the train. So it's a governor's act that has, you know, said because you have an MBTA station, you have to have this zoning. But the train and the MBTA didn't dictate this. They didn't say we want, you know, so that's always a misconception too, that one has something to do with the other. While they do, they really don't. The MBTA didn't demand that we got this zoning. The governor did and Governor Baker did. So I, I think that's a clarity that I would come out of the gate with. Uh, those two clarities and make sure that people understand because again, they don't understand. They just don't have enough background information. So that's how I would begin the discussion about this. Um, and then again, Chief Rose, you will get a question about how this is gonna impact our safety or, you know, our police and fire. What are you gonna do when we have all these criminals living because we're gonna have all these additional housing? How is that gonna? I do.
Of course, um, the increase with the population in the community is always gonna be a concern for the safety of the community. It's hard to predict, you know, what that impact is gonna be until it's here. We can do our best to prepare for it, but reality is, um, we won't know until we know what type of housing units is going into that location.
And, and that's, I mean, I think that's the reality. We don't know the answers to a lot of these questions. It's just, but I just want you to be prepared to say there's that. Because like I said, Victoria and the planning department, this should not all be, although it's pointed at them. Is it doesn't, I want to make sure that every other department, same thing, Harry, they're gonna ask the same thing of you possibly, hey, why is this gonna affect the fire department? You know, do you have enough staffing? You know, um, yeah.
I, I think really, a lot of my homework I already have done because of, you know, I did, I did it a year and a half ago.
Right.
So, you know, equipment-wise and then my, my homework pretty much, so I, I should be fine as, as far as that goes.
And I think staffing levels will come up right current and future and we don't.
And we've already, you know, that's been discussed amongst myself and the board, the town administrator and numerous times have been, been coming the last couple of years. I would add on that.
So one of the things that came up as I was leaving the town hall that was asked of me is that, and, and I, is Mike, will you on? Is anybody on Zoom?
People on Zoom. I don't know who that one is, do you remember that?
I think that's Kevin, but I'm not sure. Uh, Nick Bolos is on and then there's a couple other people.
So one of the questions.
I think it's Kevin saying that was him.
Um, about taking the, the, this out of order. So I don't know anything about that. That's not my call. You know what I mean? So just think about that. I don't know what that means for the meeting itself. I don't know if it's like a way to get the whole discussion over and move forward. I, I kinda like to get the money on this on first, but I don't know the, what the thought process is.
And I feel like it's a double-edged sword if I'm being honest, because if we hurry up and move that and people might think like, why are they trying to push this through? So we don't, you know, so everyone leaves, it's all their stuff makes it through. You're gonna have speculation from both sides. So, I mean, if, listen, if someone in the crowd comes in, so they make the motion, they make the motion to do it, we have to do it. But I kinda like, you know, we have the flow set up and as, as we have it.
Yeah, my concern with that is, yeah, I didn't, I totally agree with that, but this would be one article, possibly article two of twenty as well, has potential of lasting hours. Right? There's no timeframe to say, hey, we're gonna, in discussion at this point, we kinda have to feel all, most of the questions, that they're the same. And of course I will reduce the amount of questions, but if you put it up front, is the rest of the meeting.
Until someone calls it the vote.
Right, right.
I think it's, I think that's where you're gonna have, especially if you start hearing redundancy of questions, you're gonna have someone who's gonna get, who's gonna get frustrated and they're just gonna call it and then procedurally, that's what's gonna end up happening, right? I think you're right. Yeah, but it's, but it's a valid point. And I mean, I don't know, I guess we just have, there's really not much we can do about controlling it.
I think, um, Charlie, from the point of view of conservation, my, my only thought process about that is if anybody, I mean, just because the zoning is in place, it doesn't negate environmental impact. So you might, if that question comes up, maybe you could help direct that one. Like if you still have to comply with, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act and whatnot. So that might be a help for you to, for you to answer something like that. So that, like, again, we all, and we never know, right? You get all this onslaught on Facebook and social media and maybe it won't be like that at the town meeting. You just don't know. My goal was to have everybody have same information and just, I just don't want one person to be up there taking a barrage of, of being peppered with questions without the support. We're a team, we gotta work as a team. Everybody has a piece of this information. Dictated by the state, it's unfortunate, this is the way it's coming down, but this is the reality and this is what we said. I did reach out to the town administrator for Milton. He, he's got a bunch of information. He did actually send me over their lawsuit, which is crazy. I just wanna know from a law point of view, it's, I don't know how that's gonna work out for it. But, um, and they did pull back one of their grants, which is our, our, the consequence here is the grants of being taken. And we don't know the extent of that because they have said they're gonna pull back particular ones, but they're at their discretion, they may go further. And I don't know what that means. Does that mean, yeah, I, I, I think Chief Rose, you told me you get like a nine-one-one grant every year. That's sort of like an every-year thing. Thing to pull those back? I don't know. They're not saying that. That's not listed as one of them, but is that how far they go with this? We have no idea. So the couple of grants I, I, I printed on, I gave a few, did you get a chance to look at it?
I looked at it. Yeah, it was just the ones from planning, really.
Does it really look, uh, um, I mean, we have a lot of grants, all our federal grants, I'm assuming will be protected and not part of this. But our two big state grants is, uh, the sewer line engineer from Mass Works for seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, of which we've spent about four hundred thousand dollars. So they're talking about clawing that back, meaning we would have to pay that back. Do you have anything different than that?
Um, a little bit. So I did have a, a meeting with, um, someone from EO HLC, um, which is the department who's kind of overseeing the compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. Um, and we sort of went over the pre-tempo proposed, um, PDD bylaw. And I did ask that question in there. Um, she said there has been no discussion of her sending grants that have already been awarded, unless the award was contingent on section three of compliance. However, EO HLC does not administer these grant programs. So she cannot give a definitive answer. So it'd be up to the individual grant, you know.
Because Milton, they pulled back their C-Well grant.
Yeah, and I did ask about that. She said that one, that grant was specifically contingent on three eight compliance. They put that in their award letter, she said.
Well, we would get that as part of the grant, right? So on the stake of what's the grant, they would say, here are your restrictions, here are your, the protocol of each grant, you must comply with all these parameters, right? And those two grants that were talked in, highlighted in yellow, were that, was that language in there?
I don't know. I'll go back and look at the opposite. I don't believe so, because these grants are, they're not, uh, we've had these for a couple of years. I got them right when I got here. So they're two thousand and twenty-two grants. So I don't even think that was an, an act. When did the governor?
Yeah, I think, I believe it was an act, but it just wasn't, uh, I, I don't think it was part of the grant award, but I mean, that's not a definitive answer that she gave because she didn't speak for all those other, you know, programs. So it's really sort of a, not, it's not being discussed, but it doesn't mean it wouldn't be, wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
That's at least the answer I got.
Right, right. That's what, that's the strange part about it. The second one of those grants is like about seventy-five thousand. We already spent fifty-two thousand.
You're almost over.
Like, it can be done by the time we're out of compliance. If it was, if it was voted in, that's up to the people. But we haven't until, what, December twenty twenty-four, right? To be compliant. So we have, like, but whereas multiple bites of the apple if needed, right? To make sure we really wanna go A or B, right? So if we're done with that grant of seventy-five thousand, remaining twenty thousand, probably gonna really come back to us and say, hey, you owe seventy-five grand because now you're out of compliance.
They, but they are, they, they did say they would claw them back.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I find that, I, I find that hard to conceptualize, but we don't know. I, I would, I will email anybody who wants to read the lawsuit from the Attorney General to Milton, because it is crazy. Um, I'll just redo a little bit of it and what they want for relief, which just totally, in my personal opinion, goes in the face of democracy. But the court is asking for their relief, prayer for relief. The Attorney General respectfully requests that this, the court reserve decision on the merits of this complaint, report the case to the Supreme Judicial Court for common law for adjudication of the issues. Declare that three A affirmatively, affirmatively obligates the town to have a zoning bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size, in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right, and that satisfies the other criteria set forth in three A. Declare the town has failed to meet its obligations under three A. Declare that the Attorney General is entitled to injunctive remedies to secure the town's compliance with three A guidelines. Enter an injunction requiring the town to create the zoning district that complies with three A and the guidelines within three months after entry of this injunction. And if, and to the extent that the town does not comply with said injunction, enter a further injunction prohibiting the town and Mr. Achu, I don't know who that is, from enforcing any aspect of the town's zoning bylaw rules or regulations to the extent that such enforcement is inconsistent with the town's obligations under section three A, A and the guidelines, and order such other relief as a court may adjust. So they're basically saying if you don't forward it in, we're just gonna get an injunction relief and you're gonna have to apply it and do, do what we want you to do anyway.
And then, and then that, at the end of that, it states also that they, it also appoint a special master to oversee the whole planning board and everything else. So they even go further in that prayer.
Proves unable, I'm willing to comply with the injunction relief sought. This may include, but is not limited to appointing a special master to propose a zoning bylaw that complies with three A and the guidelines or imposition of fines on the town. I never saw it.
We've gotta remember that a town is the animal of the state, correct? So when the state tells you you gotta do something, you gotta do something, right? And.
I know, but why?
I politely disagree with that. We have home rule for a reason, Charlie. There's a reason why we, we are, and, and I'm, I feel very, very passionate about it.
Pardon me, but let's not kid ourselves. You don't really have home rule. The, it's Commonwealth of Massachusetts tomorrow could do away with every town, every municipality in the state.
Okay.
But they haven't, right? So there's, so there's a process by which, right? And I don't wanna get into this, this conversation about right, wrong, or indifferent, right? But, but, but at the end of the day, that lawsuit doesn't skin, because lawsuits throw a bunch of crap on the wall. And, and I like to think, even though we live in this Commonwealth here with, and the politics are what they are, that no judge would allow a single non-elected appointed master to come in and usurp the authority of the elected board members, not to mention the town meeting. Okay, there are gonna be lawsuits upon lawsuits upon lawsuits in this, right? If it were up to me, I suggest wait till the end of June, when everyone else has had their town meetings and we'll have a lot more towns that we can join with. And if the Attorney General wants to go down this road and, and sue ten, fifteen, twenty other communities because they're not, they're trying to be responsible. We talk about how much we're gonna lose. How much does a hundred kids going into our school system a year cost, right? And I know that's not the reason we're here, but these might be some of the questions that come up. And I would suggest that that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's a quarter million dollars, okay? So what does that cost to put those students to? So when we're, when we're juxtaposing what we might lose, we also, we have to juxtapose that and I, about what we, you know.
I was just trying to quantify based on, that has been a question, right? That, that, hey, um, okay, so we risk losing our grants. What does that mean? I just quantified it, so that we have an answer to that question. You, yeah, you may think it's insignificant, you may think it's very significant. It doesn't matter what you think. It's just, it's just information. It's just factual information. This is what it is right now.
Well, to, to be fair, that is not the jeopardy. That is what we're being threatened with. If they're successful in the lawsuit, that is the potential jeopardy for this town. That is what they're threatening us with. That's what they're gonna ask the courts to give them. And I don't know, you're a lawyer. There's smarter people in the room than me. A lot of times you go in, you ask for a thousand things.
I mean, when I read that, uh, I just thought, that's so much more than what this is about, right? Like, that's just like, so that's pretty much.
It's a very, this is what I'm, this is what I'm saying, right? There's a very chilling effect on, on home rule, freedom of speech, uh, um, you know. There was a little disagreement up in the, up in the Boston harbor not all that many years ago about, you know, people, you know, doing things and not having representation relative to their own, uh, destiny, so to speak. And, and we took matters into our hand in this little corner of the country, right? And, and, and I'm not suggesting that this is a violent reaction to this. What I am suggesting is the idea, the principle, that we have a, a singular elected official who is choosing herself to make these lawsuits, to go after the constituents in this Commonwealth. And then the threat is they're gonna hold our own tax dollars back from us. Those grant monies are our monies, whether they're from federal or state taxes. And so that's, uh, so.
I get your argument, Kevin. I, I think my purpose here was not to have the arguments. It was more to have everybody prepared to respond to these types of arguments that are gonna come up in this discussion and be prepared, as prepared as we can be, have the same information. No. Like I said, at least there's a quantifiable number here. You, you, again, yes, there is more, um, to this as we read on social media, as Chief Rose and, and Chief Ashley will tell us that we don't really know, right? We don't know how many housing units are gonna be built and we don't know the impact. But the reality is seven hundred and fifty units could be built. And if they are, it's going to be what it's gonna be.
Somebody's not gonna lie for this. The, the home rule is there for a reason, right? Whether, whether they wanna change that, that, they can say whatever they want. At this point, they're like Kevin was saying, they're throwing stuff against the wall, see what sticks, right? And the MBTA Communities Act was purposely created, right? So that home rule could change, to allow, to make sure that, and then also with an enforcement compliance as well, right? Which is pulling back the funds and grants, things like that. So, right, is it, will it be dismissed? We don't know. That's, that's, but that's part of the conversation. It's not all this, but it needs to be discussed.
I, I think she's gonna go as far as she needs to comply.
Do, do we have our state representatives involved in this at all? And there, there are voices, the state capitol represented.
Well, we have so many compulsions.
Well, looking at the voting, it was unanimous in the senate and it was, I believe, three ninety-four to one or three ninety-four to four in the legislation.
In favor?
In favor of the MBTA Communities Act. So that's, those are the facts. That's what's on historical record. That's, this is vote, this was overwhelmingly voted yes by the folks you speak of, the people representing the people. So as a, as a small town, we have very little say what happens up on the hill, right? But this will impact our community for better or worse. So our, this, the reason for this meeting, to Deb's point, it's Kevin's, everybody's point, is to make sure we're all, we're all talking to, to the facts, to the points, and that people are gonna be asking. On social media, they're, they're talking about everything from the home rule to, um, you know, sewer water, to fire police, right? All concerns about us, right? And this is a meeting to make sure we're all, all our ducks are in a row, right? I even saw some things on like the Indian burial grounds, um, the American burial grounds. I'm sorry, take it back. Many American burial grounds, that, will that impact anything with, with this, uh, development, right? As a, when I understand, someone's concerned about Indian burials. Is, are they tried thereby or is that gonna impact that in any way? Grants is another one that comes up all the time. How about, and as, as Deb said, each community is being treated differently. We will only, the only thing we know is what Milton's going through and that's still up in the air as far as what, what the end result's gonna be.
I, I also think that, I don't wanna jinx this, but I feel like Milton was the poster child, like, because they were the first one that said no. So I feel like they're striking at them to try and prove their point is.
But there's several other communities that, that are joining in, Middleborough.
Oh, no, yes, uh, well, we're all together, when I last saw.
Right, right. And again, the number's gonna grow. When you start getting at twenty or thirty, the, the logistics of the Attorney General having twenty simultaneous lawsuits, she will be out of office before, you know, before the legal, because this is, this is something that is gonna set huge precedent. And, and the Supreme, if the judicial courts here decide that, that contrary to local rule, that the state can just say, we're going to do something that can be demonstrated, will have, uh, a, a negative effect on communities, uh, and those, those effects be damned.
I mean, in, in reality, and then the grant question is just, it's a quantifiable number, but this lawsuit doesn't talk about grants. This talks about forcing it, forcing it, is what it's saying.
And, and again.
And that's totally goes in the face of democracy.
It, it does. And I would suggest that even if we bought it, like Middleborough says, okay, there's enough. We're gonna put a little bit of money into this. We're gonna fight it. But then what is the settlement of, of the court case? All right, we'll bring it back to town meeting and then it fails again. Like, like, how, how do we do it? But, but like, if, if this is one of the, then what is next? And I, and, and is this a hill that, that we're willing to, I don't wanna use the term die, but, but plant on. Why? Hey, enough, because twenty years ago, as much as they wanna say it's not the MBTA that's doing this, I sat there when I had members of the MBTA come before the planning board and wanna do this TOD, this Transit Oriented Design. This is not a new concept. This is something that's been kicked around for the last fifteen to twenty years. And you know what we said? Sure, we wanna be out ahead of it. So we already have zoning to accommodate some of these goals. It's just not with the amount that they're talking about, because we had a reasonableness to how we can grow.
Um, when it comes up to the grant question, I think myself or Margaret will answer that.
Okay, yeah.
I'm comfortable with that. As far as this lawsuit.
So the, the article will be read, right? And I, I tried, I tried to speak earlier, but every time I tried to unmute myself, I kept getting muted. So I don't know what was going on.
Oh, I thought it was just feedback. I'm sorry. I thought it was just like noise.
It sounded like feedback.
See, right, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear like.
That's all right. That's why I can't hear. Fine. It's fine. So the article gets read and in typical form, somebody in the back and then yells, motion to adopt, it's read. Right. I don't know who that is, but, um, what happens if certain, somebody says motion to defeat? And it gets a second.
That, that's not a, that's not a, a, a motion you can make like the Robert groups.
Oh, what motion do I have to make to defeat them?
You have to vote.
I'm sorry, what?
Just so you, just so you know, I'm, I'm sure I'm quite what's a, a motion to defeat. Somebody can say that, but that's not it. That's not a motion that, that you can only, you make a motion to, uh, put the article or the item before discussion or the movement. You could, you could make a motion to table and.
Make a motion to commit that to committee. You can make a motion to table, but, but you can't make a motion to pass or to defeat.
You can make a motion to call the vote and then it can be defeated.
No, no, no. So again, all right. I'm assuming again, somebody a lot smarter than me, right? Just talking something apparently, that I'll check myself, but.
And I don't know, we answer it.
I'm saying you do. So, so, motion to adopt is read.
A few town meetings.
I, I, I'm not saying wrong. I'm just saying I don't know. I, I don't wanna say yes, absolutely.
No, so motion to adopt is read, somebody seconds it, any discussion on the vote, and then this is when there's gonna be open for questions and statements. My, my, my concern is, right? And I heard you say that somebody from either the planning board or, well, first off, the planning board has to make a recommendation.
Sure.
And that's the sticky way that you guys, right? Uh, recommending for this, when everyone in the room is gonna be. Wants everybody. There's gonna be a, a healthy contingent of people that are concerned about the honor.
Both sides of, both sides of the yes or no.
Right, 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 right. And then after that, then call the vote. And then some, then people would make, uh, but if there's a motion and a second, if there's any further discussion, then people are gonna get up and start talking. And then we can make a motion to call the vote at that point in time. Um, I'm just interested, uh, to see if, if, if the vote were to get called right away without discussion, what would happen? If it would get defeated or not.
Well, I, I mean, I think from all of what we've seen on social media, it's not looking positive.
The worst thing I think would be if it gets, we wait a long time for the vote and at the end it gets tabled, people waiting through the whole time it gets tabled. I'll do, I think we're trying to avoid that, right? Or the board.
Yeah. No, we wanna have a healthy discussion. We wanna hear what people have to say and then have them go on what, this is what they want for their town for next thousand years, right? Because it'll, it, once it's here, it's here.
I, I think they might, I mean, I don't know what the, the planning board is inclined to do, but I mean, and it's not the planning board, it's the, the people, but it might make sense to refer back to the planning board.
And there's no money for this. It's an unfunded mandate. They're not saying, we're gonna give you this. There's nothing coming with that.
Right.
I do think the ones that do adopt it are gonna get the grant monies, right? That's the, the tool, right?
Well, they'll get, they'll get grants, but those are grants that we right now are currently eligible, right? So it's not like they're gonna get a prize if you, if you adopt this, you get even more. It's just.
They're gonna, but they're gonna take that into consideration when they're determining who gets grants moving forward.
This is unprecedented, right? With the lawsuit side of things, right? So the, 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 the green communities and all that, if you adopted them, and we knew that when we didn't adopt it, because the stretch code was onerous, that we wouldn't be eligible for certain things, right? If we didn't have a master plan, you're not eligible for these things. And okay, and we understood that, but this takes it a step further. This says we're gonna be doubly punitive.
This is a little bit.
She's crazy. The unmitigated gall. Okay, I'm sorry. The unmitigated gall for these people that sit up there in Boston. All right? And this is what they wanna do to, to their communities? All right, we're in a good financial place now. We're building. All right, we're in a good financial place now, we're building buildings, we're doing, if we get a hundred units in here. We're building a new addition on the school, right, we're adding, like I said, a quarter million dollars a year minimum to the school budget. Nuts. I'm sorry, what's a hundred times twenty-five thousand, that's two point five million.
Yeah, probably have a fifty, ten thousand dollar uh average per student.
Two point five million dollars a year, so again, when we juxtapose, oh, they're gonna withhold seventy-five thousand dollars from us, or we're gonna have to pay it back? Or or we get a hundred students, it's gonna cost us that.
I give your arguments, I'm not really here, I don't really wanna make the argument unless.
But I I do have a question.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not quite clear yet. This is an overlay, correct, they refer to it as an overlay zone.
Yeah.
So it is an overlay zone that is now presently industrial, correct? Or.
Part, part of it, yeah.
And so what we're basically doing is allowing. Uh multi-unit residential. Uh. Complexes within a zone that is also industrial.
Yeah, part of it.
We're, and there's no, presently no proposal by any. Uh oh entity to build it. Correct?
Well, money's been passed, so there's nothing there.
So we have the existing PMUD, which is there right now, that allows for density up to seven u- units per acre with um. If it's age restricted or five units per acre, no age restrictions, um and there was um a fifty-five and a um apartment. Apartments uh permitted a couple of years ago for one twenty-five south main, it has not been developed.
So seventy-two unit.
Okay, it's me, I I realize it, but. Just because, I I think people are getting all wound up about something, just because something is zoned. To potentially be in an area, doesn't mean that you're ever gonna see it.
Right.
Or that or that you're gonna see it in our lifetime.
Oh, right, we're well aware of that, we're well aware, this this vote for the state is just for a three A zoning, what happens next, it's anybody's guess. Well, let's not kid ourselves. If it's zone three A, and it's a station right there. It doesn't, doesn't take much to go lead yourself to the right answers, like, someone's got some points gonna build on that, and then we're out of, then we're gonna have seven, up to seven hundred fifty units.
Say that, but Carlos, behind my property on High Street.
Yes.
That borders, that goes down to Ridge Hill Road, there is a. Multi-acre uh industrial zone. That has been in uh zoned that way since zoning came into fruition at the time. And it lays vacant. Okay, so I I I I don't see. What all the hubbub is about. Uh but that's, like I said, that's my my so.
And that's, I think, one of the points that needs to be made, is that it's already been zoned.
Yeah.
We're not adding zoned, it's already been zoned, it's been zoned, density at seven, and the reality to go from seven to sixteen units per acre, we don't have the infrastructure for that. But part of the missed communication is that. When we're not gonna have the infrastructure, well, we're not gonna have the infrastructure in the near future, but we are working on the sewer line, so. That will change, that will definitely change the ability, you may be able to get sixteen units per acre if the sewer line goes in. My projection for a sewer line, it could be, if it's done, it could be ten, fifteen years from now. But it could come to fruition somewhere down the line, so I don't wanna say it can't ever happen, right now, currently, no, we don't have. The capacity for I for sixteen years per acre, unless they can tap into that sewer, and I know Debbie said she could, but I I have some questions about that. Unfortunately, the water sewer didn't come today, which I did invite them. Because I think there's a lot, there's a big piece of this that they need to be on the on the hook for and answer those types of questions.
And that is something that I did see online, right, is people saying, oh, well, they're gonna put wells in, and they're gonna run, they're gonna run our groundwater dry and. I think something needs to be said about, you know, that they need to, if there's, if this is built, and the what, you know, the infrastructure is not there. Like Debbie's project, they need to bring that infrastructure to themselves, right, we're not gonna be on the hook to bring it to them. Uh it's just some, it's just points that brings them to see.
Do we have any local control relative to requirements for building within there? Because you say that, but if somebody comes in to decide, you know what, I'm just gonna save my own well, I'll do my own water treatment. I'm gonna put my own sewer treatment facility in, it's not a secret, that happens all over the place. You know, where they have individual treatment facilities.
Water, right, we know there's town water over there.
No, I understand that.
But and you could do a sewer treatment plant, I mean, in Hanson, we did um fifty-five thousand, like five hundred.
And 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 I guess I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum with Charlie, right, keeping my ear to the ground with all this housing across the country, right, five years ago. Right, ADUs would have been a cursed word, right? Uh.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory dwelling unit, right, in law apartment, you know, more specifically, our local one would be a one room, yada yada, okay? It is now widely accepted across the country that this is a reasonable and viable solution. Cities and towns are right, because it is a lesser of a local imprint, right, you're not cutting down trees, you're using existing well and cectics. You're uh and and oftentimes, these are 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 older folks, depending on how, so they're not putting kids in school, right, doing what we. So to answer the question, housing is on the forefront, they are going to be, and this election coming up in November is gonna be critical, I would suggest that if that that a current leadership stays in there. That the housing, you're going to see that the federal government and state governments are gonna be throwing money at housing. So yes, while right now interest rates are through the roof, right now it may not be attractive. When a developer knows you can't say no, I don't need to go through special permitting, I don't need to do things like that, this is just basically a buy right. Watch, because we are ripe for it, we have gas, we have sewer, we have water, we have rail service, we have, we have proximity to large scale facilities with jobs. Access to the, access to the highway. It's a perfect place to put this stuff, and you're right, the PMUD. But the critical difference is with the PMUD and its density, you had to have at least three of the four things, you couldn't just do housing. You had to do housing and retail and and so, so there were three of them, so it made it more of a a project that was beneficial for the town, right? Local stores where our our residents can work, that we can frequent, right, jobs, increase taxes, right? We're not operating at a net loss on taxes like we do on a residential house, like, most people don't understand, it takes thirty years to pay back what your one child went through school. On an average size house with taxes. At sixty years, if you have two kids, we never make the money back for school, we make it up with commercial. So what do we do, we take our prime commercial area, and we're gonna decide where has all the advantage of commercial, and we're gonna insist on putting potentially seven hundred units, and I don't mean we. But I mean the state, it doesn't make good business sense for us, it just doesn't, and and whether you're a for or against, I don't like the way this was done. Because Free Town went on in their way to be on the right side of this a long time ago.
Again, I don't disagree necessarily with you, you know, we've had these conversations, I'm just trying to make sure everybody's prepared for the same information. You vote any way you want, and if this gets to vote, I mean, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that. Someone doesn't get asked a question and they're sitting there going.
Well, so the question, the question, so I I need the question answered, though. Do we have the ability, all right, we adopt three A, can we adopt regulations within that that says? If you are going to operate within three, you must tie into town sewer, you must tie into town one, can we do that through regulations?
I'm not sure if that's allowed through regulations, I know state isn't reviewing, they're only reviewing our bylaw, they're not reviewing our regulations.
Does the bylaw, within the bylaw, does it state that the the towns have the right to promulgate rules and regulations, no?
Yeah, we have, we already have rules and regulations associated with the PMUD, so if this passes, then we'll amend those. Regulations to go with the new district.
Okay.
It's probably going through the whole petition, it's the right you have, the town.
Right. So, and going back to sewer and water, they, during the study that was conducted, right, through Serpent, everything else, there is capacity. At Front Fall River for both, to handle both, so there was a discussion that whether they're gonna tap wells, again, up to the developer, we we. Their money, right, if they come in and and build it's, but does Fall River have the capacity for town to extend uh sewer and water, yes, the answer is yes to that. So I know sewer and water's not, the water's not here, but that was their, when I asked that question, that was their answer.
So. Was Serpent critically aware of the volume that we are in contract negotiations with with Fall River?
My understanding, yes.
Just point clarification, it's um, Environmental Partners is consulting on the sewer project, not Serpent. No, it's okay, I just wanted to clarify.
That there was enough sewer capacity, but did they say there was enough water capacity?
Oh.
I mean, it goes.
Yeah.
It doesn't go hand in hand.
No. Yes.
Find more water than they'll ever, not, will probably realistically ever use.
Okay.
Uh because. Yeah, but the system was developed, right.
That's correct. What are we taking capacity away from? If we if we give a hundred thousand gallons a day to the residential, does that mean future businesses looking to to locate down there no longer have the capacity? These are things that need to be thought about, not just in the immediacy. But going forward as the help of the community, right, there's reasons why water and sewer can enter into twenty-year contracts, because you need that reliability. So again, I would suggest that currently we would have that biometric relief, you know, we can, we can get rid of it. How much more can we get rid of, and and what does that mean now? We've talked about trying to bring sewer down so we can accommodate out behind the American and and where Boston Beer was gonna be located, right, our industrial area. Uh. But if the volume of sewage is taking up, if already gets down there, don't forget, we have Ashland, and we have Stop and Shop, that's prior to that. So I I forget the number, it was fifty-five million gallons, that's something, I I I forget exactly from the contract, it's been a while since I read it, but. But it uh again. Okay, we have the volume for it. But are we taking away future receipts, future tax revenue, future jobs for people, i- i- you know, in our our local industrial zone? So.
That's the big question.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Reality is, you're either gonna have industrial in that zone, or you're gonna have housing, one or the other. And they're gonna get the sewer, and the 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 capacity that they seem to have is like they had endless capacity is what we got from Fall River. In fact, we're trying to find capacity, we were trying to find numbers to put in this.
What do you mean?
You know, Americans spilled out.
First of springs, like if we were gonna add them in, how how much that would add and what, and I mean, we really threw a lot at them, and they were like, yeah, we can handle it.
Oh, River Center.
Yeah, sure. I don't know, does any, anybody have questions that they need information before going into tonight's meeting, that's the thing.
On this one or any other, yeah, the sewer water thing got covered, the grants thing got covered, the other was the other big one, so it was grants, right?
I invited this someone from the school, but they didn't respond, and I'm, they're busy, I can reach out to them, but. I don't know if anybody from the school committee is gonna be there tonight, I don't know if anybody from the school themselves is gonna be there tonight, no, yeah.
So um is the expectation, if no one from the school committee is there to answer a question, who's gonna respond?
You're gonna respond that, um you know, nobody from the school committee is here.
What's the question, and whether or not we can absorb a hundred children, like, the proverbial, whatever number it is, can we absorb more, I I believe the answer is no, looking at their Roman numbers.
You know, ten years ago, we had a thousand more students in under.
I know, we have twenty-seven hundred right now hovering around that.
Sure, right, but again, these are very legitimate questions.
Right, I'm not saying that we're gonna, we, I'm not saying we answer the question, I'm saying, unfortunately, the school's not here to answer that question, because. Like I said, when I look at those numbers, you say that, I thought, ten years ago, we had thirty-seven hundred students, we have twenty-seven hundred now. So we definitely have some capacity somewhere.
So we may have physical, we might have physical room. Does that mean that classes go from twenty to twenty-five, twenty to twenty-seven, right, so now that hits people's interest. Uh does that mean we have to hire another ten or twelve staff at whatever that number represents, right? It it's a.
But I think you're going down a rabbit hole, right, cause we're gonna get taxes from these extra units too, so where.
We've already established.
Well, you've established, but I don't know, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm telling you, right, I I got up on town meeting, I've used these numbers before, they're very real, okay? You get five thousand dollars on average from a very nice house here in town, it costs twenty-five thousand dollars a year net minimum school spending, is it not for students, somewhere around that?
Yeah, and I don't think it's twenty-five.
Quite.
Regardless, I mean, I don't think you can get up there trying to.
No, no, we should, we shouldn't, but it it's not hard to answer, right, that school spending multiplied times twelve, that's what it costs to put that kid through school for the twelve year. Not amateurizing, not doing any of that, just saying, okay, it's a net loss, no matter how, it it's it's just, that's how, that's how it went. That's the argument that was made on town meeting for, this isn't the first time the state's given us something, adult entertainment district. Windmills, right, thank you, Duval, solar, thank you, Duval, right, all these things, but what wasn't attached was the threat of a damn lawsuit. Okay, and that's what makes this different. And this is so much more of an impact, it will directly affect everybody's pocketbook in this town, if we have something like this.
I just, I guess, and I, I'm not saying I disagree with you, because I actually agree with you on a lot of levels, Governor. If we answer them and we don't have exact numbers, we're going down a rabbit hole, I would just answer a blanket statement that. This is a net loss, not giving numbers.
Yeah, no, no, I guess that's the point what I'm making, we don't need exact numbers, somebody has to be able to sit there and say. Well, this will clearly increase the budget of the school department, to what degree we don't know.
That's a statement you can make, but to say, we don't know, I mean, I can't answer, like I said, when I look at it, I'm like, who knows?
I mean, the superintendent should be able to answer at any point in time of the day or night, a very simple question, Mr. Super or Mrs. Superintendent, your. In your, in your school. If we add a hundred students, what does it mean, if we add a hundred middle-aged school students to you, what does it mean? And they should be able to tell you, we're gonna have to add a couple of classes, we'll have to bring in a couple more teachers, right, we'll have to add a couple more buses, which, again.
Compounds the issue.
Right, it compounds the issue.
Yeah.
Food, the program is gonna cost more money.
Oh, right, I I think the the answer, let's say this goes through, right, pros and cons, it goes through, it's gonna cost the town quite a bit of money across the board. All services, they gotta be stressed, from police and fires, schools, everything, so we we have to. Right, approved and built, correct, the caveat that it gets approved, and seven hundred fifty units go up over a course of, a course of time, right? I don't think overnight, probably years before it happens, but we have to plan for that, we always have to plan for potential of up to seven hundred fifty units. What will that town look like, and what will do to the services we have in town, and that answer is, it's gonna financially hurt. All right, not to mention the character of the town also gets hurt as well, because you're adding now this huge. Apartment complex, essentially what it is. Of different various residential, whether it's affordable housing, or whether it's senior, whatever it is, we can't control that, we have no say in the matter.
Victoria. If. They, these apartments, if they're, can they be condominiums?
It's completely up to the developer.
They wouldn't be wrenchers, they would be reboms, correct? But but that's not the model that's currently being built on the regular, right, but the model that's currently being built for multiple housing. Is one way to get government reimbursement, and by the way, that's not going anywhere, that's actually going to be increasing, right? You look where they're trying to put some folks that need housing, right, and and they're finding all manner. There are, there are hotels that are booked solid right now, why, because they're getting that check from the government, so Charlie's point is correct. That if it was going to be standalone, very fine and attractive condominiums for those uh those discerning customers, right? But we're talking about something that's just over the border of Fall River, and if you are thinking about living in some sort of housing complex. And you can get just north on Fall River, but you have all the the services there that you potentially need, and you can put your kids in in a suburban school system?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Trust me when I tell you, they build it, they will come, it will get.
Anything, they'll come, I.
Well, that's what we currently have, I think the issue is, that's what we currently have, and the people that live in this town. It's gonna depend on them, how they decide, but let's let's face it, if you do add more, more, more people, your small town feel starts starts disappearing. Right, so the concern for most people that live here, especially those that live there for years, is. Our small town now turns more of into a.
Carlos, when when I was born, there was, in Free Town, there was like three thousand people, now it's, now it's grown to be. Three hundred percent. And you know how you mitigated that, Charlie, you came up with, you need an acre and three-quarter to have a lot, you know what they used to call that, Charlie, they called that snob zoning. And they adopted that, they adopted that here.
Yeah.
To maintain growth and do it in a smart way, right, no one's saying we don't want housing, we passed the PMUD, right?
I'm I'm not gonna get into an. Point out a few facts.
There's no affordable piece to this Bible.
Yeah, no, there is.
Yeah, so I know I've seen that on some pages online, there is no. Yeah, so I know I've seen that on some pages online, there is no requirement to be affordable, um, to have.
Which is kind of a shame.
No, no, so there's no requirement, but it doesn't prohibit it.
No, it doesn't, I think that's more. No, I know.
It is something changing in the future after three A is approved. So from reading the Communities Act, they can change that act to make sure that we have A, B, C required down the road. They can amend that law.
And then we have to amend the districts to follow, yeah.
So the whole thing is, we have a lot of questions, but we're not getting many answers from the people in charge. That that's my biggest concern is, we go, let's say we pass this and then nothing happens, and also they change and say this will be required and this will, you will have to do. A, B, C, and now we have to meet those requirements with little say, and that's my concern.
And here's my my other question, and and this is, this is selfishly, it's a question for me, because what what made me think of this is. Train stop that's middle of Lakeville right now, they're relocating it. Quarter of a mile.
Yeah, it's not far.
So does that change?
We're using that.
What their zones, right, so they built a bunch of housing all around that, and that was how they got on with it, right?
Yeah.
And then they moved the station. So does that create a new district because they moved the station?
No.
No, I don't know specifically Middleborough or Lakeville's requirements, but.
Adopted where it is, so even if they move that station, which, talk about wasting money. But then the zoning would stay there.
The, yeah.
The station would be.
So yes, well, that's, so that is what happened.
Crazy, that's what happened.
So then here's my other question is, we have.
The reason they had to move the Lakeville Middleborough Station was because the train, now the train deadlines. At, uh, Middleborough Lakeville. They would have to back the train from the track that they're going to go on to down into the station, that's why they changed the station.
Oh, I I get, I get, but can you imagine, can you imagine, twenty years from now, we build everything around that station and then they move the station?
Well, then here's my other question is, we have two lines that run through town, right? Currently, we have the east side and then the Aslan side, so it stops there. If they decide, hey, we wanna put a stop on the east side of town, do we have to adopt another district on that side of town? So now you're talking about seven hundred and fifty additional units on that side of town. And that's something I haven't heard talked of, and I'm not seeing that they're talking of it, but I guess it's just a, it's a question that I've thought of, you know, that just blows through town.
No one can answer it, right, because no one would have thought, even a year ago, that we would be listening to our own government governing. Right, threatening to sue the people communities for not adopting zoning. But like, that's where we're at, so I have no trust whatsoever, they can tell you whatever, wherever you call, and this is what's gonna happen, and this is what we believe, and there was a very sly answer that they gave you. It was their get out of jail free card, and you pointed that out, that they don't ultimately have authority over those others.
Which is true, I mean, they don't wanna say, give me an answer, and then it be something different, so I can understand that.
Right.
Well, I think the Milton lawsuit, I was, I I read something that, on Fringe, well, not Fringe, Milton had a second district, they wanted to put us somewhere else, right? So they couldn't fit everything within that half mile radius that the MBTA Communities Act requires. So they proposed, and not for them, in Milton's case, they stated that they had a vibrant, uh, community of restaurants and and virtual area. So that half mile wouldn't really, wouldn't really suit that area because because of the commercial aspect of it. They, so they said, we could put X amount in this area, but we wanted to put other, the remaining amount just outside a half mile, would it stay changing? Um, and I believe that's one of the the things that they're talking about is the possibility of in, of expanding that zone. Have you heard anything on that, as far as are they allowed to, if we can't do anything in a half mile, can they go out to one mile?
So, yeah, just to clarify, so for, I'm not familiar with, uh, Milton's requirements, but with, for Free Town. Um, forty percent of our zone has to be within a half mile of it. So you could make the other sixty percent, um, they say, in an area where there's transit or a downtown area where it's feasible. So they do put that in there, it's not.
So now you're expanding it, so that forty percent could be that, so right now, correct if I'm wrong, Victoria, thirty percent of the development has to be open space, right?
Of the, yeah, of the project area, yeah, yeah.
Thirty percent of open space, so forty percent has to be there, so ten percent of that open space, well. If you take that forty percent requirement, thirty percent of open space, now you expand the boundary, you're in downtown, so you're, you're right there on the, next to Junior's or W. Don'ts. So the the possibility of those housing units getting closer and closer to town is a real possibility, or is it going in the other direction?
Well, I'm not really sure what you mean.
All right, so if you take a circle.
Yeah.
And you stick the PMUD area in that circle.
Okay.
Half mile within that, of that, of that center, is that, that half mile zone that the MBTA is talking about.
Yeah.
Right? The thirty percent of that zone, it has to be open space, I'm assuming for the people who could potentially live there, right? And you're saying only forty percent has to be in that zoning, sixty percent could be extended out outside a half mile.
No, it's, that's for the zone itself, I'm sorry, so like for the zone itself, so we have. Forty forty percent of the zone has to be within a half mile, the thirty percent open space requirement is something the planning board had put in there, and it's on a. You, it's per, like, per law or the project, thirty percent of the law area has to be designated, like, for open space.
Would be sad, you have that many units, you want someplace where they can, you know, congregate and everything else, right? But what does that do to the half mile radius, the, can they push it out to, let's say, a mile, mile and a half out from the T, from the station, I should say?
Well, so the thirty percent open space requirement is not going to affect the zone.
Okay, good. But what about the, can, my question is, can the state come back and say, can we expand, expand the half mile zone to a one mile zone from the station?
I mean, they can amend that.
Right, that's my concern.
Section three A however they would like, but I mean.
And that's my concern.
So far, the proposal we have will comply with what's current, the current act.
So as of today, we're we be compliant for that area, but they could change it to expand the zone.
I mean, I can't say what the state will.
Yeah, right, I understand that, and it's not.
How many, how many acres?
How many acres is the zone?
Hmm.
It's.
How many acres are we required to have?
We're required to have fifty.
Fifty acres.
Correct, that has the capacity to support seven hundred and fifty units. Um, the current PDD is, I wanna say, well over that. I mean, the current PMUD, I'm sorry, so the district in existence is, the boundary is bigger than fifty acres. I don't know the exact number.
And how much of that is fat Liam?
Um, uh.
All.
Yeah, it's all, we, there's one town owned parcel in there, actually, it's point four three acres, very tiny. Um, yeah, but.
Get eight units on it.
Yeah, they say.
Well, we do have a seventy thousand square foot lot size minimum, so we're keeping the same, um, you know, one point six one acres requirement, so you could not build on that. You'd have to combine it with another parcel, just to be clear, um. Did I answer your question?
Yes, my question, uh.
So we have to put fifty acres in. Have we got, right, that's what you said, right?
The zone has to be at least fifty acres in size.
Yeah. All fifty of those acres are within the current mile.
No, forty percent has to be within the half mile of the section.
Fifty acres that are in the current PMUD that we need to have in there, is that within a half mile? No, it's not.
We satisfy the forty percent requirement within the half mile.
Okay, but the question is, where's the other sixty percent of?
It's the existing PMUD, so it's all.
Okay, so a hundred percent of this zone three A is within a half mile?
I don't know the exact distance of the half mile radius, I don't have it on my chart, but I believe Copart is outside the half mile radius, there's some.
That's a, that's a question that may come up, right? When we, if somebody gets up and says forty percent of it, I hear, where's the other sixty percent? And and the answer back should be, this is where it can go, or this, I I I mean, I don't know exactly what the answer is. But certainly, we don't want it out there going to town meeting, that people think that sixty percent of this can go anywhere else in town.
No, can only go in the approved zone.
Right, but the the question is, if I go to the T station, how far in the town can I go? Do I go to Ridgefield Road, do I, is that sixty percent extend to Freeman Circle?
So it's more about the boundaries of the zone?
Right, how, how, I'll, no, yeah, boundaries, yeah, how far down the street does the potentially go? Because I believe Freeman Circle's in that PMUD, doesn't it?
I think we're confused in the zone.
Freeman Circle's not in the PMUD.
Yeah.
Actual zone with the H.
Freeman Circle's a forty B.
Right, so, right.
So you're, so.
You know, you you have this, you have this imaginary line, this is the zone.
That's the underlying.
Only forty percent of that, what she's saying is only forty percent of that is all, is within the half mile, right?
Right.
Right, so where's the other sixty percent? I was, my question is.
It's still off the top, it's just not within the half mile.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly it.
Right, so that.
That's a contiguous parcel, and it's all located there.
Yeah, but on a map, right, so so you'll be able to demonstrate. That this is how far away, it can, it's not gonna be located on the middle of Chase Road, it's not gonna be on Slab Ridge, it's not gonna be on Grand Dean. Here it is, right, and I think that's the crux of the question, and this is why we really need to concentrate on 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 the question is. How far outside of that half mile? And and the answer is, well, here's the zone, right, here it is, it goes as far as that street and that and over there, and people are gonna understand, I think that's, I think that's the reality of it. Um.
Okay.
You know, the fifty acre PMUD, that is only within the, it's not completely within the half mile, is what you said.
The P, the, yeah, the, the existing zoning boundaries are not all within the half mile radius, you have some.
Okay.
You know, town forests in the back there, you can all.
I guess the answer, the que, I guess the question I have is, is is could we not just take the fifty acres of PMUD and say this is our zone?
Well, that's what we're doing, we're using the existing boundaries of the, of the PMUD, we didn't touch the boundary.
The fifty acres of the PMUD.
I believe the PMUD is over fifty acres. I don't know the exact district size, but we would be in compliance, we didn't touch the boundaries of the PDD, of the PMUD.
So you might wanna know, figure out how many acres that is. You might also wanna, when you're talking about PMUD, you and I know what that means, Kevin knows what that means, but very few other people know what that means.
But again, again, understanding that that we don't wanna, we don't wanna co-mingle, this three A is not a PMUD, right? So you could already have, you can basically say we already have an existing planned mixed use development, with with increased densities. This three A would be within that, now the reality is, I think there's only fifty of the acres that are unused, right? Copart, I think, has taken up the rest of it.
Yeah, the only, there's only three undeveloped parcels, and that's about. About twenty acres of land undeveloped over there, um, that meets the, the lot size requirement. Um.
Lot size requirement?
Yes, the one point six one acres is the lot size requirement.
It is?
Yes, that's what's proposed, yes.
Proposed in a new regulation.
In the PDD bylaw.
So you're saying there's only twenty acres right now that's not developed?
Correct.
So that would tell me that the most, unless Stop and Shop, Copart, or anyone else sold.
Sold land, yeah.
We would only get a maximum of three hundred and twenty. But I also looked at it, that's, that's one side, the other side is, is okay, there's a smaller business there that's developed or a house that can.
Right, exactly, so that's not included in the single.
Figures out, they make more money by renting out houses than they do selling used cars, is the day that they put houses there. These companies are not business to lose money, right, these are global companies, they make decisions, hell, we have a company that's a big company, just knocked down a building for the hell of it in the middle of our damn town, right? Not doing a damn thing with it, right? So, so companies do some really strange things, right, uh, they will operate at a loss just to claim it, right? So, so, uh, I I mean, you 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 look at, oh, that's the reality, okay? Uh, if I had a nickel for every damn proposal that we have, when somebody was gonna do something, right? Um, so clearly, there's a lack of trust that we have, so, um, at least the PMUD is within there, okay, it's an area that is serviced already, I think that's a good question, I wouldn't be hesitant to throw out that. Because again, I'm trying to figure out how this means, you have to have seven hundred and fifty homes, right?
You have to have the capacity to build seven hundred and fifteen.
Right, and I, and so I'm trying to figure out how. So that capacity is not all in, that capacity being a zone that would accommodate that.
Correct, and the state excludes some land from this calculation, so like, you know, it came up early in the planning process, why don't we zone the state forest? You cannot, it's permanently protected, so they excluded a lot of land, um, that you could not just.
What about their, their land at their T station is on train station?
It's, it's a part of the zone, but it is considered excluded land, it was not.
Why wouldn't you want to put that on there? I, I already developed commercial property right proximal to the train, no, no.
To somebody.
To report about, oh, land that's owned now, and Copart's land and so forth, that, that's the point also. They can go in and anything that is zoned, particular to that parcel land can be done on. So just because you're zoning a certain area of land to be an overlay for another zone. Doesn't mean that housing is ever gonna be built on.
No, just means it can be.
That it can be, right.
Just that it's.
Remember when we adopted the solar bylaw, and who the hell would have thought that people are gonna have commercial grade solar facilities in their backyard, and I'll be damned? Right, none of us can predict the future.
You can't.
But what you have to do, you absolutely have to do, is. Is plan for the worst and expect the best, you know, right, plan for the worst and hope for the best, right? So we can sit there and say, well, it won't happen, it might not happen, but but then here we are, we never thought that we'd have sewers coming to town, natural gas. We never thought we'd have a rail station, here we are. We fought to get the rail station, but they wanted to put the overnight, they wanted to put the layover station in Free Town, we fought them, put it down in Fall River, right, we don't want it up here in our community. Right, we have been pushing back on the rail for a long time because we have seen it's demonstrated oftentimes what kind of an effect it can have. Um, and so I I think at the end of the day. I'm glad that we had this meeting because it clarified things for for me, I think it's gonna make it easier to answer questions tonight. I think if we're short and sweet and to the point, um, it's not the planning board's fault.
There's also a point that, seven hundred and fifty is not a hot number, they could be reduced to five hundred units, or fifty, like in Rochester.
Well, there's a three A minimum requirement because we're an MBTA station community, we have to meet the X amount, so ours, ours is seven hundred and fifty units.
Rochester, Rochester has a different classification, so we're con, Rochester's considered an adjacent small town community, so in there, um. Their capacity number, their unit capacity is based off of available land, it's based off of, it's something different.
In that case, with the water, they didn't have enough water support, seven hundred and fifty units, so it's not.
I don't believe that's the case, but I'm not too familiar with their.
I, yeah, I worked in, I was familiar with the planning process when that was going on, so it would reduce to three hundred and fifty base in the mouth, I'm on the water, they had to support development. So, um, I'm just gonna say that unless we have any additional stuff.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, if anybody has the information they need to answer questions tonight, does anybody have any other question on any other articles before we go into town meeting tonight?
The only one I I I've seen is regarding the ambulance, I know you can talk to that, why we need ambulance now versus buying one later? Some pretty clear cut.
Dollar, dollar amount.
By dollar amount, people love dollar amount question.
People don't understand that, I have all the confidence in the world that.
Trying to think what else people are thinking about, all I've heard people talk about.
You never, right, you're going based off of what you see on the.
Right, yeah.
Which are very dangerous.
Oh, exactly.
First, they go, that first mistake is the reading of the document.
Yeah, so first mistake is reading it, second mistake is both than anything, all right, those two things, stop.
And then, uh, our treasurer won't be there tonight, so I will try to answer any questions that have to do with her articles, and if we can't get them done, well. We can't, I don't know, who am I supposed to be with that? Think of them as well versus I can't even those.
Is there a statistic that depicts how many people can live in a unit?
Um, a statistic?
That may be a.
Or you mean a term?
I think it's that family sized, I mean, you're probably gonna have to be family sized homes, right, whatever they're called.
Oh, I know.
Five.
I don't think. I can answer it if somebody liked me to.
Oh, yeah, okay, it might be a killing question.
Uh, if it's, if they're, if it's based on sewers or septic, right, then it would have to be two people per bedroom, right, so depending on the number of bedrooms. And typically, you'd have two, two people per bedroom, that is a occupancy, that's not to say that people won't stay there, now, if it's on sewer. Then there may be a difference, but typically, for permitting purposes, it's two people per bedroom, gee, so if it was a three bedroom, we assume that there'd be six people that could potentially live there.
Is there any border health reg that says, like, eh, you can't have, you need a hundred, okay, I I fostered children. And I had to legally have, I forget, eighty, a hundred square feet per child, right, in my house, in my.
There is, so, so, so there's gonna be minimum building code, right? There's gonna be minimum housing standards, there's gonna be definitions of what a bedroom is with even with the. We're gonna operate under the assumption that the new housing that's gonna get built is gonna be all codes and regulations, right? And so an easy answer is that if you were gonna be looking and planning out something, I would say two people per bedroom. Is is, that's how you have to look at it, that that could be the maximum that could potentially live there, right? So they say it's a two bedroom, oh, it's just me and my wife, well, the reality is, you sell that, you can have four people live there, right? So, so it's not even just the number of units, it's the, it's the number of people, right, that fluctuate, right? Uh, and 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 are those people with children, are those people older folks, you know? Uh, and, and, and are those people with children, are those people older folks, you know?
And we couldn't restrict that.
No, we cannot, cannot restrict number of bedrooms.
No, and again, which is why we went out of our way to give the density, if you are age-restricted in the PMUD, we recognize that there is an appetite. For that type of housing, not necessarily, and as I talk to my compatriots in other towns. There's an influx of people coming into communities, and it's hard just to manage, just, just people, just the volume of things that need to go on, it's hard, so.
And we're lucky we don't have a hotel.
So, any, also, articles or anything, something else concerning, no?
No, I, I mean, it involves good conversation by everyone, but I.
I'll make sure everybody's got as much information as, as prepared and convenient for tonight, and rally around Victoria and her board.
Well, yeah, bottom line, you're not gonna be able to by yourself, it, um, in fact, I, I prefer to do not answer every single question that goes out there, right? I don't want, because that's just, you know, that's, this, they, as we demonstrated here in this meeting. It's plain to go around, as far as the, the people that are in charge of that particular subject matter.
Again, understanding, Plinwood's role, they did not bring this, right?
Correct, right, correct.
So, so their role is they're the legal board or committee that has to hear any public hearing relative to zoning, right? So, the fact of the matter is, I think in a different, uh, uh, and under different leadership, the planning board might have been, you know what? Okay, I'm gonna get up there, we're just gonna say that begrudgingly, we did this, we don't agree with it, but we did it because we don't wanna be on the wrong side of the law, we're gonna let you folks, that's it. We're not getting up to try to defend it, we're not gonna get up and try to pursue it, we're not gonna get up and, that, that's a tactic that could have been taken too. So I've suggested, if the planning board wants to get up there and promote this to a certain degree, then they are gonna be on the hook to answer some of those questions. But if it's a very simple matter of fact, we held a public hearing, this is what they're asking us to do, we agree or we disagree, there you go. And if there's a question about what about sewage, water and sewer answers it, I think.
And that's, and that's what I'm trying to explain, is that, I hope that it's not all directed at the planning board.
Right, I mean, what I'm getting at, you get up there, and then you sit back down, my job is done, I, I told the people, somebody's made a motion, if there's conversation, there's discussion. Is Serbet gonna be there?
No.
They're not?
No.
Okay, is there a reason why? I thought we were expecting Serbet to be there.
No, no, I never said Serbet.
I, I didn't say you told me, so, okay, I, I said I thought we were expecting Serbet to be there, for support, okay? Um, alright.
I agree.
And they assist at all in this?
And, uh, uh, yes, in amending the district, they did, I don't, and I believe they're, they're helping other communities, I don't think they went to any of their town meetings either.
Now, we just wanna make sure that we're all the same age.